I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Remain standing as Jerry Dusenberry from Monticello Christian Church leads us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While we're grateful to have tonight to discuss the business of the town, we pray that at the end of this evening that the winners would be humility, truth, grace, and progress. We pray for your wisdom to be present here tonight amongst all we discuss. The items that are important to this community of Jesus.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Brock?
Here.
Mr. Burris?
Here.
Mr. Kim?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer, the mayor. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address the council from the table provided. Public comments must come by with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. We'll start with Jim Gabarzik.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. Today I bring forward a group of kids that we have a Lego team where we build a robot. They wanted to come forward and talk about their project with you for potential investment in the future.
Okay, am I listening to the Bionic Tacos now?
I signed up twice, Mary, because I thought we might take a little more than five hours.
I'm not going to run the clocks in here. I'm glad to see young people there.
Hi, my name is Emily Gabarzik, and we are the Bionic Tacos. We are an FLL team. FLL means First Lego League. Our team has two coaches and ten kids. Last year was our first year of competition, and this year we have three new people on the team. We compete against area teams, and if we qualify, then we go to the state tournament. We have to do three things at our competition: the robot game, core values, a challenge, and a challenge project. The robot game is where we have to program an autonomous robot to do eleven missions. The core values are fun, teamwork, innovation, discovery, inclusion, and impact.
Hi, my name is Sully Bethley. This year, the challenge project is called City Shaper. For the project, we have to identify a problem in our community and make a solution. The problem we have identified is connecting places that people have to go or want to go, like sidewalks and bike lanes, like the park, the square, and the pool. This will make it easier for people to go to.
Hi, my name is Eli Anderson. We chose this by researching different ideas that provide the most accessibility to the community. Additional sidewalks and bike lanes will help the city because they will connect many places and allow people to walk on the sidewalk instead of the street or parking lots. We really hope that you like our idea and take the sidewalk project into consideration. We think that the sidewalk project will make our great community even better.
Hi, my name is Jeff Pramtinger, and I'm going to tell you about our diagram of the proposed sidewalk. This sidewalk is between East Livingston Street and Wabash Depot. This is right outside the building room. It will connect Nick's Park and South Independence. In the diagram, the black lines are the proposed sidewalk, and the white dotted lines are the proposed crosswalk. There are five trees and three light poles that need to be removed into this project. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Will Stangl. I'll be telling you about the project costs. The table is our estimate for how much our project will cost. We got our cost estimate by researching several Illinois Department of Transportation cost estimates. We went to the project site, and we measured and counted to get the amounts. The estimated project cost is $13,108.20. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions for us, or would you like to see the robot first?
Let's see. We've got to see the robot.
It's just going to do a little programming.
Is it going to run off the table?
It shouldn't.
It's going to.
It should.
Very nice.
Now, do you have any questions?
You're going to put that in Robot Wars on TV? You seen that show?
No.
No?
You've got a question over here.
Mr. Sonnet?
I have a question. So how long have you been working on this project?
Couple months. Couple months, yes.
Couple of months.
I like the cost estimates. They do a really good job of getting that.
Does your cost estimate include prevailing wage and change orders?
They're like, what? He's kidding.
We need to cover that.
He's like, I don't know what that means. Tell me again where, okay, tell me again what we're trying to link together. Independent, okay. Who was, oh yeah.
Um...
This park.
This park.
Okay, so we're right here.
And South Independence.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Got it.
Any lineups?
So, do you, so I applaud your efforts. This is an awesome project. It's one we've actually looked at already, so your plan is, could go a long ways. Again, I applaud your efforts. Did this aspire, any of you, to be civil engineers or urban planners, elected officials that make all of that happen?
Don't you want to be, don't you want to be that when you grow up?
I think one of your coaches happens to be a civilian, dear. You understand?
Mayor? Yeah?
Have a question?
Yeah.
Says here, third paragraph, that you chose this by researching different subjects. What are the other locations that you guys researched?
We actually researched many different, like, making different buildings, and then we decided that we needed more sidewalks because we took like a field trip type thing and we walked around and saw what needed to be done.
I have a question.
Very nice.
Anyone else? I applaud your efforts.
Do you have any questions for us? Good? No? Okay, good.
Good job, guys.
You do?
You like faking the hammer?
I can answer that. More than you know. Really good question.
I'm good at it, too. Anything else from you guys? Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Now, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting if you don't want to, but you're welcome if you want to.
I have the same feeling.
That's the end of public participation.
Thanks for coming in.
Very good. Very good. Now it's a matter of...
So all the other projects have to be presented like that, right?
With the robot.
With the robot.
Makes it more interesting. Okay, moving on to item three, Consent Agenda: Approval of Documents and Action Items as Listed. Claims Report: Claims dated October 16, 2019, through October 28, 2019. Meeting Minutes: City Council Meeting Minutes, October 15, 2019. Planning and Zoning Board Meeting Minutes, September 16, 2019. Budget Report, September 30, 2019. Treasurers Report, September 30, 2019. And Fire Report, September 2019. I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions about any of the items?
To Mr. Gabarzik, did we replace all the chainsaws that we own?
He's not here. He's not here.
He left. Well, does anybody know?
I don't know if that was all of them. Did Jim, Jimmy?
I think that that was, believe me, I can't remember, but I do think that it was actually all of them because the batteries hadn't, like, they hadn't had their permanent maintenance over the years, so that the battery, like, wasn't good, so they just replaced it.
Very good. Thank you, Mark.
Anyone else?
I have one question. On the, under the oil and chip program, it says we've used $6,400 out of a budget of $90,000 that we haven't been charged for. We, we're not going to do as much this year.
Was that more, was that payment in full?
You're talking about the budget report, right?
Yeah.
I think it's on the claims report for this meeting.
I did see.
So Eliana, we paid $58,377.
It's just not in the budget.
Right, because it's September's budget report, and this claims.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing, no, let's have a roll call, please.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Tim?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Mayor's Report this evening is brief. I'd like to commend the football team, congratulate them on making the playoffs for, I don't know how many years consecutively it is, but it's been, it's been a long run, and I really appreciate that happening. I'd also like to congratulate the marching sages who are near and dear to my heart. This past weekend at the University of Illinois, they were named Governor's Trophy winners, grand champions in classes 1, 2, and 3A, and that's quite an accomplishment. They, they were, entered in class 3A, which is a class up from where they were supposed to be, so they beat all of, beat all the schools in that. There's twenty, twenty-one or twenty-two bands in that class, so they are to be commended. We really appreciate it. This Sunday, I don't know what the time, 6:15, they're going to do a parade around the square, so they're going to start on state, come up state, go around the square, charter back to the school, and then they're going to present the show, the competitive show, one more time on the football field. As you recall, Saturday was not a very pleasant day. It rained like all day long, so the contest over there was moved inside that, that on the east side, I can't remember, Lovey Smith's...
Irwin.
Irwin Center, yeah. Anyway, they competed in there. I saw pictures of what, while it was going on. That's amazing how big that place is in there. They all fit, it's a hundred yards long, so they were able to do everything. So, anyway, there, be congratulated. This is, this has become habit over the years. It's not a hit and miss thing. I'm always proud when, when my, the legacy is upheld. I always call it the legacy because I spent a lot of years doing it, so, anyway. And those girls did student teacher for me, you know?
Yeah, they did.
Any, any, I don't have anything else. Old business, we have none, new business. Resolution 2019-58, a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow for an accessory structure in excess of 200 square feet. Callie, do.
Sir, thank you. Doug Unney, who is here, is the owner of 800 East Little Rock 47, which is a suburban residential, and is a meat picker parcel. He would like to construct a workshop that is 40 by 60 on the property to store his equipment in. The structure would have a bricklayer on the lower portion and then siding on the top to match the residence. The structure would exceed the 200 square foot storage requirement within an RSL, that's Section 1030202, calls out, and so he's requesting a conditional use permit so he can be reported with his plans. Public notice was published in the October 2nd edition of the local paper, and all adjacent property owners were notified by statute, with no comments received. And the Planning and Zoning Board held a hearing at the October 21st Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and public comment was made, and I'm pretty sure it was the shortest public hearing in history, and after further discussion, the Planning and Zoning Board voted to recommend approval.
Thank you. Doug, you want to step up to the table and see if anyone has any questions? It's just exercise, probably. Anyone have questions, Doug? Eight acres is a lot of space.
Yes, it is.
So this, this won't hardly make a dent in that, though. Which side, which side do you want?
It's kind of going to be on the south side of the Circle Drive.
Gotcha.
Turn out the roadside. It's really the only place I can put it. The utilities come up the west side of the Circle Drive.
Okay.
I could really, wanted to put it there, but can't really do it without considering expense.
Anyone else have a question, comment? Hearing received, none, I will pass. Call for roll call. And I need to, didn't I about do that? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2019-58? Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? It's not that I'm in a hurry, it's just...
Roll call now?
Yeah.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Jones? Not here. Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Moving on, Resolution 2019-59, a resolution authorizing the execution of the IMLRMA Minimum Maximum Contributing Agreement. Mark?
Yes, so we have to do this every year for the risk management insurance. It's our liability and all of this cop insurance. This year, because their claim trip and low, they are actually doing a zero percent increase for all municipal holidays insurance this year, so it's the exact same rate that we made the last year, and it's just a little bit more than the year before. We do participate in the MAFS program, so our premium is lower, so we take a little bit of the risk with the insurance if we do have a lot of claims. In the history of the city, there's been two years we've ever had to pay more than our annual contribution. 2008, which we're still in the hustle, still working through the boss there, and 2016, because of the fire.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2019-59?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments, questions? Hearing received, none, Jill, roll call.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland? Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 2019-60, a resolution approving the bid for tract remediation services. Callie?
So you all have a memo explaining the history, so we'll rehash that again, but the city advertised a second time for remediation of tractage, which includes abandoning the existing monitoring wells, essentially removing the top four feet of contaminated soil and replacing with clean soil, and then performing the appropriate testing and so forth. So the city advertised for bids and received three bids a couple days ago, and the lower bid, which would allow for a late winter project, was received by Western Asphalt Incorporated in the amount of $48,455.50, and city staff recommends that the council accept and award the contract to Western Asphalt.
And again, this is covered by?
This is covered by Pfizer.
Okay, this is covered by Pfizer. See. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2019-60?
Certainly.
Second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion, questions? Hearing received, none, roll call, please.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. At this time, it will be the annual budget request presentation from the Monticello Chamber of Commerce, and I think it's Kevin Feeney and...
Rory.
Yeah, Rory. I was, I knew, I knew his name. We harass each other all day, I just can't remember.
You what?
Have a seat. Put that between you. What? That's true. I can always remember Kevin.
How's everyone doing? We are, Rory and I are both on the Chamber Board, and normally Denise, the director, would be, you know, maybe taking you through this presentation, but she's also coaching, and she was saying if her seventh grade girls got two wins last night, she'd be here, but I guess they, they took an L, so we're, we're up here instead. Lucky you guys, right?
Yeah. Something like that.
Like Mayor Stoner introduced us, I'm Kevin Feeney, and...
I'm Rory Wright.
So this is our 2020 funding request. We'll start with the mission statement. Monticello Chamber of Commerce supports and promotes a strong business community. Pretty blanket statement there. I know that Main Street will be doing a presentation after us, so I guess just to distinguish between, you know, maybe someone that doesn't, doesn't know would think that they serve the same purpose. The Chamber applies to, you know, at-home businesses, businesses that are off the Monticello downtown square, where obviously the Main Street does great things, but that would be more to a concentrated area of town. I hope I didn't misrepresent your district, but that's the difference.
Some of the quick benefits of the, of the Chamber is it helps, can create some local jobs, support local events and programs. Most local activities have some level of, of commercial support, so, and it leads to strong municipal sales tax receipts, is what, what it says there. And Kevin, and then...
Okay, so the Chamber Board of Directors, as you'll see, Rory and I are both on the list, and board president this year is Jim Ayers, he was not able to make it, and then Jim Singleton, being vice president, he will fill in and be president next year after Air, Mr. Ayers moves to past president.
Some of the, the business events that we do monthly, annually, is the bi-monthly Chamber lunches, so many of you go to that every other month. Annual Chamber banquet, which was held in November, we switched that to April last year, and we honored the football team, and it's going to be in April again this year. I believe it's at Monarch again, isn't it?
Yes, April 16.
New business ribbon cutting, so you see us around, around town on new businesses, or rebranded businesses happen, they want a ribbon cutting. We do the Business Expo, which is now, we kind of combine that with the Kirby Derby. That's sponsored just to try to bring in more people to Monticello that way. We're doing some educational workshops, so I think Kevin participated in the one at Kirby for the CPR.
Yep, there was a hands-on, or hands-only CPR class that, it was, I know myself, and then the office, we went, and we thought there was definitely some good takeaway with that, and I know a future class will be, like, a deep dive into how to use Facebook and Facebook Live videos, and kind of tailor that towards what you're trying to promote within your business. Certain tourism events, so we'll get into later in the presentation, kind of the difference between, you know, where tourism and chamber, kind of seen as, as two separate entities almost, but what we promote within our community, as we get towards like our marketing videos, and what people from the outside of Monticello see, would be, you know, those concerts that are being held at Allerton, put on by, I said, Ubi, and then there's a community of looking for Lincolns, of people that are kind of out hunting for Lincoln sightings throughout the state. There's obviously the interstate signage that promotes what our community has to offer. Monticello Railway Museum, that's a huge one, I've come to found out, and we'll get into more in the following slides, but that Champagne County Tourism, we're in year three of a five-year commitment, in which that, you know, helps put our word out to a wider, a wider base. I think Rory was telling me that there was a time where, you know, like, big groups at a time would come through Monticello, you know, on like a big bus, and those are dollars obviously being spent in the community, where I think Rory was more complaining because he got behind that, that big group ordered in front of him at Monarch and took him next to him and he was a bird, which sounds like a Rory complaint about a bird.
On that note, we're going to go through some of the digital marketing summaries, so a lot of the tourism dollars go to this, this digital marketing and marketing in general. If you can read that slide, it shows kind of the number of impressions that we're supposed to get with TV and video ads, and then the number that we're getting, and what's kind of, kind of neat on that is 85% of all those impressions, when the videos are played, are getting full views. So if you can imagine when you see a pop-up online or anything like that, how often do you just not watch the video and click through it? So 85% is a pretty, pretty impressive number of people watching the, the content for the commercials that they have out there for us. And we can go over to the, the next slide, it kind of, it goes, breaks it down in more detail, what percentages of the digital TVs, the more of the commercials, and the digital online footprint, which is a lot of different, different websites and TV channels and stuff that we can go through, that you can kind of see in a minute on the breakdown here.
If there's, if there are detailed questions, I mean, we'll just kind of be upfront and say, we may not be, it may not be us two that's the best to answer this, but Denise kind of handles this with a more on-hand approach. She might be the best one to answer questions that you have, just to put it out there.
Yeah, and, and a lot of times, we may not see these commercials on the local channels or what we're searching for because they're not made to be in our viewing area. It's a, you know, Peoria area, Charleston, Mattoon, Bloomington, Taylorville, those are kind of the areas that it focuses on to bring people from outside into the community. So if you don't see them, don't, don't think, well, where are these things that were paid for? Because they're, they're out there.
Okay, yep, so looking at just the different digital TV and digital video, the breakdown of kind of how that's being viewed, if anybody has any questions, feel free to chime in. And then here specifically are, like, on the digital TV that left Mostrap, those are the different networks that people are tuning into and seeing these ads. Surprised to see MTV at the top of the list, and that, that still have the presence, that apparently it does, but it kind of goes down and just breaks out, like, what networks people are tuning into while seeing the Chamber ads, the tourism ads. So now we're going to show a commercial. Thanks, Doug. Whatever you can give us. Yeah. I love technology. See, it's really small for YouTube.
It's not even on the screen.
I will send you all the link tomorrow.
And it's on the Chamber website.
It is, too.
Go to the Chamber website, you can see the, the different videos for the businesses.
No, it's okay. The, I guess the takeaway, had we been able to watch the video, they're, they're pretty, they're neat, so Monarch, Free Ravens, Out of the Blue, there's a long list of retail businesses that had the opportunity, when this first came about, to, for roughly $350, they pay for this ad to be made, and at that point, they keep the ad, so then they can use this ad for however they want, you know, moving forward, which is nice, and it's, it's just a way to kind of put the word out on your, about your business, and however you see fit, and kind of show that to other communities that are not around Monticello or not Monticello itself.
Who does the video? I think it was Comcast.
Comcast, too.
Yeah, that's who the contracts do for the advertising, so they come and, come and do it.
And new businesses also, I guess, have the access to have commercials made that maybe would have missed out on this when it initially was brought to business attention. Okay, so...
Yeah, that's who the contracts do for the advertising, so they come and do it.
And new businesses also, I guess have the access to have commercials made that maybe would have missed out on this when it initially was brought to businesses' attention. Okay, so community events, we touched on this earlier, like the Business Expo. So the Business Expo is kind of taking a new shape lately, where we are doing it, like Rory said, in conjunction with the Kirby Derby's Packet Pickup. That change was made because I think the old model had been maybe a little played out where it was held at the Community Building and it was just something people saw in the News Gazette and said, okay, that's, you're not the News Gazette, the Pike County Journal, and knew to show up for, knew to show up for the Business Expo. And you kind of got the same people that would come and they had stickers that they would stick down on promotional, you know, pamphlets and just hope to win free stuff, but they really didn't get anything out of what you were presenting. So made the decision to kind of give it a shot in the arm and have it in conjunction with the Kirby Packet Pickup, and we are also considering, you know, doing, continuing to do new things to spruce it up, like have it be a potential stop on the whites of spring to kind of, you know, throw alcohol into it and might make it a little more fun for some people. Just some things we're talking about. The Citizen of the Year, that is obviously an award that gets given out at the annual dinner, which we're doing in April coming up. Last year it was Rachel Lejeune with Willow Tree Missions. Frosty is the next thing on the list. That is, if you happen to see during the Christmas months or the winter months, there is like a wooden cutout of Frosty the Snowman, in which businesses, participating businesses can decorate that Frosty how they see fit to bring attention to the business. Lunch with Santa on the Train, that is our biggest event. So I wish I knew an exact dollar figure on what that brings in, I should have had that information from Denise, but I know, I think it was two years ago, Tom, maybe you can weigh in on this because I know you're a taker for this as well, we brought in about $26,000 two years ago, and I think that has maybe even increased in, I think it definitely has increased.
So we added a couple more cars.
Yes, yes. So I think we're somewhere close to, you know, a $30,000 event, which is huge for us. Okay, good deal. And just speaking from experiences, that's one of the events that, you know, I'll help with and do all weekend long, and it really is impressive to see how many people from out of town that brings in. I feel like I recognize a lot of people from the Monticello community, and I'm on the trains pretty much throughout, all day Saturday, all day Sunday, and how few people I recognize that are clearly coming from out of town is pretty, it's pretty telling, I think. And then also along with that same weekend, you know, in terms of the Christmas parade that runs and the Candidates Forum, which I must say I have not ever attended, but I know for some people that is, that's an important, an important event.
A little bit of financial information here, you can kind of get a breakdown of our revenue, new structure. 31% comes from city support, 35% member services, so our member dues annually, 34% comes from special events, and like he touched on, a big chunk of that is Lunch with Santa. And we're lucky to have the Railway Museum and be able to use those trains because it's kind of a neat deal. If you can't get your Full or Express ticket, you can at least experience it, you know, in a little different way. The expense structure, so with special events, we have some expenses, member services are a little bit, marketing, which is Facebook, website, that kind of stuff, and then just our typical fixed overhead costs, which is salary, utilities, copy and printer leases, that kind of, that kind of stuff there.
Okay, to member services, so what does the Chamber bring to its membership? So I know Denise says while at the office in a given week, you know, she will get phone calls from people out of town that may be asking, hey, this is, this is what I'm looking for. And then Denise has obviously the pool of membership of businesses to promote or to plug, and she'll, she'll stay with, she'll first go to a membering business before plugging anybody that is not. There are, you know, opportunities to do certain sponsorships, which we'll get into, I think, here in just a second, for the different events that we talked about, have, you know, a company or a business can have their name tied to a certain event where it's seen in the promotional material. And then one, one deal that, it does not apply to everybody, but just seeing it firsthand on the, on the insurance side, one particular carrier that we represent, I know offers a really significant discount to businesses that have a Chamber membership. And, you know, that doesn't apply to everybody, but if that business is insured with this particular carrier, I mean, if the premium is sizable enough, it could be thousands of dollars for that business. That's an annual savings just by simply being in the, being a member of the Monticello Chamber, which is, I think, significant.
And then all this, all this requires data, you know, and we're gathering the data with all that Comcast information that we saw, and the next thing we're looking at doing is kind of seeing if we can relate back the Lunch with Santa ticket sales to out-of-town people and where they come from and fits in those viewing areas of those commercials and see how valuable that is. And that's how you can kind of break down what that's getting us dollar for dollar. And then on the marketing side, we're still looking for more efficient ways to communicate. We do a lot of social media posts, we invested a lot of money in our website a few years ago. An overhaul did, we used PAC Interactive as one that manages the website, and like you said, you can go on there and look at those videos that we, the videos in the commercials. The digital media marketing is where the tourism dollars go, a big chunk of that. The Courthouse Square Sign Project, and I think that's full currently, isn't it?
Yes. Yeah, I guess there are two spaces at the bottom, but I guess they're not the same size, so those did not fill up, but it is full.
Yeah, let's see if I missed anything on this. You know, on this one, I did invite two to three additional net revenue screens. We revamped our dues and sponsorship structure, so you can have more business sponsorships, you can sponsor certain events, so I think, what is Burgess and Klein sponsoring?
We sponsor the annual dinner and the Business Expo.
Yeah, so there's lots of businesses that can participate in different ways where they couldn't before. So go ahead with this piece.
So yeah, so our request would be that the city would consider continuing to offer, there's obviously the Chamber financial support that's listed there, the $12,500, I know that was the amount, I'm pretty sure that's what we requested last year, that is at one point in time what we did used to receive from the city. I believe that was not quite received last year, I believe we got $11,500 last year. So we are, we are asking for $12,500, and I think it's worth at least noting that like the tourism, that $19,500 you see with the tourism financial support, so that is entirely, like that's a separate deal from how the, what the Chamber would need to operate. So, you know, the tourism dollars, you can get to that $19,500 very, very quickly using the digital ad campaign that we went into where there are all the numbers breaking that all down. So putting those two numbers together, we realize that, you know, that number looks pretty significant, but it's worth noting that the Chamber operates on just a portion of that, and the $19,500 goes to tourism and is kind of out of, that's not touched by us.
What'd we budget for that issue, do you know? The year that we're in?
Tourism, it was $19,500, I believe.
Was it $19,500? So that's no change?
Yeah. No, but that's part of the Champagne County tourism. That's part of that.
I just...
The tourism dollars are spent from what we receive from what the hotel tax, and that's dictated by the state.
Right.
So they can't go in, use it on a Chamber dinner, for example, but promotion for tourism activities, that's an heads idea, that is eligible.
Good.
So just wanted to say thank you very much for letting us give that presentation, and thank you for your consideration, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Can I ask, how many members are in the Chamber? I know I could go to the website and count.
So I, well, that's what I was going to tell you to do. But we do, on the website, it does list out by genre of business and alphabetically the businesses that are members.
Do you know what percentage of the businesses in the community participate in the Chamber? Pay dues?
That's where Denise would come in handy right now.
Okay. I'll ask somebody.
It's significantly, it's pretty high.
I know it is.
I wanted to say somewhere like, I thought it was an 80 number of total businesses, but I could be a little wrong.
You're being cordial.
Take it back.
And then those dues structures are based on size of business.
Yeah, I understand. Anyone else have questions, comments? Appreciate your efforts, John.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Nice job. Okay, we will now have an annual budget request presentation by Monticello Main Street, and Steve Mitz is doing a solo performance this evening.
Hey, Gary. Good to see everyone. Quick introduction of myself, I'm Steve Mitz, I work at the First Day Bank here in town, and then I'm also on the Chamber or the Main Street Board, I'm the treasurer. And our current staff, Executive Director Stephanie Cleese, some of you may have met, and then Samantha Coon is our current president, and Lori Lilly is our Vice President, and Theresa Brown is our Secretary. And then we also have eight other board members. So we have a board of 12, which is a good-sized number and a number that's larger than I had before, so we're excited about that. Thanks for the opportunity to come talk. I'll run through quickly our slides, and we'll obviously have questions for, kind of questions as well. Do I have to write things on the...
Yeah.
Okay, so real quickly, Monticello Main Street, for those of you that don't know, is actually a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that was formed back in 1996. And it was a form based on a movement that was started across the country by the National Main Street Trust Center that was started, and it was a preservation-based economic development and community revitalization program across the country. They have rebranded themselves now over the years, and now they're actually called Main Street America instead of National Main Street. And so we have affiliated with them, you know, every year coming forward. They have a real similar program to what the original, our Main Street, National Main Street program was in place, and so they've continued to, continue to reach out and provide resources for communities like ourselves that want to preserve what we have and build on that, and also keep our downtown districts going. We have, contrary to the Chamber, that actually serves the entire Monticello community. Monticello Main Street is determined by a downtown district that is bordered to the west by Bill Lavid Inc. on Center Street that way, the northern border is Center Street, the eastern street is Hamilton Street, I believe, and then the southern street is Marion. So it's basically the downtown area with the J-Street off of that, off of that area. So that is our primary area of concentration for wanting to make, keep the community vital and in economic enjoyment. Our mission, real quickly, is to strengthen the vitality of Monticello's downtown, and we try and do that through promoting our civic pride of our community by encouraging growth, economic growth in our community, by preserving and improving our community resources that we have and also getting people involved in the community. We are a volunteer-based organization for the most part, we do have one paid staff member, our Executive Director, everything else is volunteer-based. All of our board members are all volunteers, all of our committees for the various, for the various groups that serve are all volunteers as well. So we try and approach it that way, and we try and reach out to people that are community-oriented and interested in, you know, maintaining Monticello and building and keeping it going. So that's our, that's our mission, basically. We try to work towards saving the places that make Monticello unique. We obviously have a good partnership with municipalities here in town, the city, and then we also try and drive community improvement for the benefit of not just the downtown district, but for the community as a whole. National Main Street has, for years, had the concept that if a downtown community district is vital, then the community maintains its vitality and its economic development. So that's why their focus has been for the downtown area as much as anything. For those of you that may remember, we had affiliation with the Illinois Main Street Program for a number of years, and that program, of course, has still gone by the wayside with the state of the home waste funding challenges that they have. But it's still nice to drive around the state and look at the entrances to cities and see if there's an Illinois Main Street community sign. And I think we still have ours up, there's a number of communities around the state that I get to go to see, and I see those signs. So it engenders some civic pride in myself, seeing that, and I hope other people will see those, see those, feel the same way. We have success, as Main Street America sort of defines, that we have success when the citizens are involved in the Main Street mission, and they engage with our organization, when our local resources, our partners in finance and revenue, our volunteers, when they're all engaged, and when the cities, the citizens of the town are also engaged in the community and in trying to get, keep the revitalization and the economic development of the community going. We established some goals here last year, and we're going to continue those into the near future. Two basic goals, and then we have work plans that we develop off of those goals. We have decided that one of our goals should be that we want to increase the visibility of our organization, reminding people of our nonprofit status, reminding people of what our mission is, because I think sometimes I talk to the average citizen in the town and ask them, what do you know about Monticello Main Street, and they don't have as much information as I'd like for them to have. They are not as informed as I think, I wish they were. So actually one of our challenges and one of our goals for the next couple of years is to increase our visibility. The marketing stuff that we're going to do, Stephanie is very tuned into social media, and so we've taken advantage of that. We've enhanced our website in the last year, monticellomainstreet.org, and we also partnered with PAC here in town as our administrator for that website. And we've also tried to reach out to our volunteers and our sponsors as well for communication. We also want to build what we call internal capacity with our members and with our volunteers and our funding. We want to expand our investment in technology as we can. We've already done a grant writing exercise in cooperation with the city on some lighting in the alleyways, and we've completed that grant and it's been sent, and we're looking to see what result we get with that. And of course, we've been a city partner with you for a number of years, ever since our inception, and we've always appreciated that support and commitment, so you're always to be applauded for that. Main Street approach is sort of a four-pronged approach. There's an economic vitality concept behind that, there's a design committee concept behind that, there's a promotions committee, and an organization committee. So real quickly, the organization committee is like the administrative arm of the organization. It's involved with the administration of the program, with any staff involvement, any volunteer involvement. volunteer involvement, what kind of funding resources you can find and solicit. Economic vitality is like, it's used to be called economic restructuring. It's concerned with, well, how is the viability of the downtown? The businesses that are in the downtown, how are they doing? Do we have business space that is available for visitors to come into? Do we keep an inventory of those business spaces that are available? So, we try and provide statistics and have information that's available for people that may want to come and have an interest in investing in the town. The design committee, we've had a facade grant program in place for a number of years in cooperation with you, and that has been a wonderful program for maintaining the historic preservation of our buildings and making them attractive and interesting to people outside. And so we continue to work in cooperation with you on that program. I think that's about a $12,000 to $13,000 program that you guys fund for, for those buildings, and that's really been a robust program. There's a number of buildings around the square, the passages, if you walk around and see, those are all based on the facade grant program, so it's very nice. The promotion side is sort of the event side. So, Main Street wants to have events that want to bring people to the downtown district. So, we've got a couple of different events here that I'll talk about, and the promotions committee runs and manages those events. So there's the four pillars of Main Street that I just talked about again, and some little pictures there that go with. Main Street America is, has a funding resources or funding sources breakdown that they recommend or they'd like to see their communities have, and we're very much in line with those guidelines. So you'll see the public funding piece of the funding resources is thirty to fifty percent recommended, and we're about thirty-five percent, so we're right in that range. Funding from the business district, and this is a, you know, a prize event, and they're sick, they recommend a twenty to thirty percent range, we are a little light in that, and we're working on trying to get that, improve that, we're around fifteen percent right now from last year. Community funding is thirty to forty percent. We're in a good, healthy percentage there, we're about forty-five percent. And much of that is businesses that are outside of the district but are also part of the community, revenues from various events that we hold, some of the events that we talked about earlier. The Reds at Christmas is a February, or a November event that's coming up, actually, that'll be the Friday after Thanksgiving. And those ticket sales always go quickly, and we've gotten to the point where we can actually just do an online ticket sale, we don't even have to have an actual advertised ticket sale, so they go so quickly. Tropo Fantasy is a February event, Lights of Spring is a May event, and Monticello Celebration is a September event. I'm sure any or all of you have had a chance to participate at least one of those events. The purpose of those events is to bring people to the downtown area, and to bring dollars to the community, and get people to come and spend, and spend money in Monticello. So that's one of our, that's one of our funding resources there, the community funding aspect. And of course, sponsorships and partnerships from the city residents and individuals. And last year, we rebranded our, sort of our membership concept to more of a partner concept, instead of getting away from, okay, here's a membership, here's what you're gonna get with that membership. We went more with, we want you to be a partner with us, and we want you to participate with us more. We want you to volunteer if you have time, we want you to come help at the celebration, you know, if there's a booth that we need to have manned, we want you to come and help and volunteer in that. So, so we sort of rebranded that membership concept last year, and we continue to do that, because it was pretty well-received. Okay, so that's the, that's basically what I had to present today. Our funding request is similar to what it has been in the past. I think we actually received $17,500 from you this year, and we are asking for $20,000 if possible, but we have always appreciated the support that you, as a council, have provided to our organization, and we look, we look forward to working with you again going forward. And I'll entertain any questions that you may have, if I can.
If you were to dream, what are some of the things that you would hope Monticello Main Street would be able to do that they're currently not doing, if they had money to be able to do that?
Well, I know that you guys have, or the city has passed that downtown tax to help support the business, or the buildings, existing buildings. I would love for that to take off, however we could do that. If that means maybe some businesses coming to town that can support the tax, more people supporting the businesses and paying more tax, that concept really fits into the Main Street concept of historic preservation, so that would be wonderful if we could do that. We have reached out to, I think, Cali and Terry, that Main Street would certainly be interested in helping, when we get to that point, administering that program for you. We've got, you know, Kenny Hudson from our design committee is a historic preservation architect that has very good knowledge, a lot of knowledge on that concept, so we would certainly be interested in reaching out with you on that. So that would be, that'd probably be the biggest thing, if we could, and however we could get that funded, if that took partner donations, if it took sponsor donations, whatever, that would be, that'd be a nice one.
Anyone else? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, Pepsin Hill Area Request for Proposal.
Thank you, Mayor. So I agree with you all, send you all the draft proposals that we talked about a couple of months ago, and I think that we're not willing to be building for with an RFP to redevelop the site, despite track date still ongoing remediation. But we do anticipate that occurring, I think the contractor was willing to get started as soon as they could. And then, just kind of keep that on the back burner with whatever comes up. So I just want to go through the draft that you all received, I will apologize, the printout that I made in the one, I should not have done it in black and white. Again, on this one, what? Basically, the three parcels in question, Pepsin Hill, and it does have, you see that agglomine that is just to the west, aerial of that lower parcel, that is the actual boundary line, it doesn't show up obviously in black and white. And then the three to three mill property is just to the north of that, and then track date is that triangular parcel just to the north of forty to railroad tracks. So, since the contractor is not meeting today, we'll go ahead and work through this. So, page one, the executive summary, what we did was, that just is an overview of the site, identifying, it's kind of like your elevator pitch, right? What the previous uses were, what remediation efforts have occurred, how big the site is. And I did make mention that we do have that no further remediation letter on the sites for the, perhaps in the reader's site, and then there are no deed restrictions on the site, I can also confirm that by reading the letter again. And the city, just out of due diligence, were undergoing a phase-one environmental study on the site just to see, to make sure that nothing shifted or things that we're not aware of. But we do have that site being cleaned, so the NFR letter. And the NFR letter also states that it's appropriate use, it can be used for industrial, commercial, residential, so there are no deed restrictions on that. The next page of the site summary, I broke down to the two primary sites, and then track eight I left as an optional, just to kind of keep that on the radar there. We identified that, without putting a sale price on there, because we want the developer to basically submit something to us, we're not paying brokerage fees, that's a standard line then, putting these. And then, in terms of current zoning, we put a clause in there, residential uses could be allowed through appropriate zoning districts. I'm not saying we want houses on there, but I'll get to that in a minute. Site description, we covered the where physically it's located, what's nearby, as it relates to residential across the tracks, industrial uses adjacent, and then the aquatic center and park. The benefits with the extension of the streetscape and the crossing, council had that in mind to be, obviously, continuation of downtown, we want people to cross, we want people to come both ways. And then the physical amenities over there, the size, utilities, and so forth. I apologize, also on this one, because it cut off a little bit, that last line should say, interest of this parcel, this part of the overall development should be identified in the proposal. Third page, project goals. These were based upon themes that were consistent in the comprehensive downtown and strategic plans, but, you know, the primary point here is that it is rare opportunity to expand the downtown area. And then, again, mentioning that the city invested in the crossing and the streetscape extension to connect west of 105 with the rest of the downtown. So, in terms of the goals, and these are relatively brief, but still kind of show an idea of what would be a good development there that would kind of feed in and benefit the downtown. We want something that's appropriately dense, mixed-use redevelopment that capitalizes on a prominent downtown location, integration into pedestrian-oriented amenities, not just pedestrian, but also bicycle path connections. So, just because it's physically not there, it doesn't mean they won't be there. Again, mentioning the four plans, comp plan, strategic plan, downtown redevelopment plan, and then the bicycle network master plan. Investment in the downtown that will create jobs, temporary, permanent, property tax and sales tax, those were the reasoning behind the stipulated loan requirement that the city started, started this work in the city region of 2005. Incorporation of aesthetic elements such as green spaces, public art, you're seeing that pop up in downtown, we want to continue that theme, so we're consistent. And then, where feasible, we're willing to be owned, special terms included later. There is a page on, just a general pitch on Monticello, Illinois, and then the proposal information, the deadline. We scheduled, which I don't think is really necessary to schedule, but a walkthrough of the site, and it's big, and land, but if anybody has any questions or needs somebody to point out, we should review the deadlines for that, as well as questions, deadline to submit questions, we do post those questions, no attribution, on the website, so basically we don't tell us that we refer to those. And then proposals, we put, we did like a seventy-day publication window, do let the end of the day on January 20, 2020. And just to, sixty to ninety days is pretty standard, I don't want to go further, because I have the holidays, I think we gave a little extra time to. Put a clause in there on, prospective developments will be evaluated on the request, Republican sense, if they have any, if they're in a tip, we anticipate will come up, it usually does. And then we have to put our disclaimer in that we're not obligated to award any of these proposals, or approve of these proposals. So, that's the very quick version.
Good.
Any comments or questions?
Do you have this attachment form?
City, no.
Oh, what attachment? I forgot your attachment to the mic.
Any other comments or questions?
So you do think this is giving you enough time to get proposals?
I think so. I have, in the last three or four months, I've had four developers who are interested in this site, and that's kind of the reason why I wanted to not wait for track date to be finished, and kind of strike while the iron is hot. And then we'll advertise to the appropriate resources that are out there already, similar to what we did with the more building.
But we're not an obligation to take any of these, and it's up to us to make that decision, it's only stuff.
Was there restrictions with the state? I know this could be, this is not, not even, that's all, was there ever?
As it relates to the, no, the NFR letter had no restrictions.
So, you're going to proceed?
I'd like to...
Go ahead.
I'd like to at least start putting it out there this Friday, first, for my OCD, and that way we can start.
The only way to get movement is to get movement. Have my blessing, the rest of them, I'm not sure they're in the favor. That site's been vacant for a long time.
We've talked about track date for a long time.
I'm tired of talking.
I mean, that was part of the process, there was a time that we didn't know if we'd have to design and engineer a bearing route, track date, and so we're getting down to the...
Just everything takes so much time.
Hopefully the light at the end of the tunnel is on, break through.
Your inquiries about this have come from business interests?
Developers.
Business developers, not presidential developers.
And that's what we, you know, mentioned, the mixed-use development. I think something that lends itself to that area could be a mixed-use development, where you have commercial on first floor, maybe residential on upper story, I don't know how upper stories we're talking, it's not, you know, we'll see what's out there. But I think by allowing that flexibility in the IFP, you know, we might get different things, and just say, just commercial, so.
Anyone else? Good luck, we all need good luck.
I'm anxious to see what pops up there, because I, I think that site is, it's interesting to look at it now as a park, but I don't know about, it has railroad tracks that surround it, and that, I think that will eventually come up regardless, but good luck, I hope it works.
Okay, moving on, Alderman's Reports, Alderman's Report, Tom?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mike?
I attended the Central Illinois...
Oh, Samoa.
Samoa, yeah, on Thursday. So there were a couple of presentations, one was on 2020 census, so they're encouraging people to get involved in that. And then there was a, there was a presentation about the extension of the Kickapoo Trail Bicycle Path, so they have one, one place where it's got to cross the railroad tracks that they got to figure out how they're gonna do that, but they hope to try to get it extended to at least the county line shortly.
Great, thank you. Pam?
Nothing.
Brad?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Michael?
Couple things. We're obviously are going into what looks like potentially to be an early winter mix of weather, huge amount of leaves and residue to be disposed of. Every time it rains, all our grains are getting plugged up, we have huge puddles in the street. If you live close, please try to help out, clean them out, do something out of the city, guys can't get the whole of them, but we got water standing lots of places, but it stands for a long time, it's tough. The other thing I have, and maybe, and I hope Terry, I wish Jim was here, I hope Terry, I recently visited the landfill, as I hope everybody does here with their stuff. We're approaching our multi-thousand-dollar grinding of the pile that's there, and we still have seventy-five percent of the pile that was from last year sitting there. Is there any proposal to dispose of that? Does somebody give it away, do something with it? Obviously, can't burn it, we can't, you know, I wish more people would have taken it for mulch, because it's probably pretty good mulch, but they're not, so before we do, we're gonna have to grind out another pile here in the next sixty days or so, you know, they want to grind it before January.
Yep. Jim has reached out to two or three individuals that are, that have taken it, I don't know if they're coming back to take more. Wendell, one thing that we'll be looking at in the near future is our other ways to dispose of that outside of grinding.
I know at one time, you know, there were people that, well, when costs were out here, and still involved heavily in cattle business, they took it as bedding and whatever, and great use, but they hadn't been buying, and they loaded it up for a while, and you, you and I, you will all know eventually that it costs thousands of dollars to get that ground up, I mean, it's a very expensive process.
I mean, it's a very expensive process, and we can't store it there because we need that property to start putting more stuff on next year. So just wondering, it just seemed like there was an awful lot of leftover from last year.
Yep.
Kelly? Kelly, don't your chickens need some bedding? You could take some of that.
How many chickens do you think I have?
I don't know. I've been out there for a while.
You've had a lot of chickens.
It's ground up pretty big, though, isn't it?
Um, it's not suitable for like next park playground mulch, definitely. It's pretty rough.
Stomper here. I know, or mire.
It was good, it's good for cattle bedding. I think some of the, some of the local farmers outside of that individual have spoken for it, so. And then it's timing, you know, they, they got to get in and they got to get out when the earth is frozen. It's a, it's a mess.
I don't know whether the, and just, I don't know whether University of Illinois would be interested at all for some of it, or whether it would be suitable for their type of bedding at all. They're pretty particular about their animals, but it might be a shock. I don't know. That's all I have. Thank you.
John? Tom?
Terry? It's the police chief's report. Did I leave you on it?
Sorry, Mayor.
Oh, darn it. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of reviewing of closed session minutes and setting price for sale or lease. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So who?
Is there a second?
Second.
I need a roll call, please.
Mr. Frerick?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harlan?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Brass?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. When we come out of closed session, the only thing that will happen is Resolution 201961. That's the, gives you the, which ones we're going to open, release, or which ones we're going to keep under lock and key. At this time, I would ask the public to vacate.